Good morning, everyone. Can you please join me for the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abernathy, Bush, absent, Doffin, Leveque, Matola, O'Connell, Rogers, Schoolnick, Tedford, Andrew, Tedford, Jim, Wendis, Wafer, here. Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So I'm going to call Citizens Forum with the understanding that at 7:35 I have to stop, so we'll probably continue later on after that. So anybody here for Citizens Forum, come on up. Just need name and address.
Good evening.
Yeah, it should be on. Kind of pull it up, name it at you a little better. There you go.
All right. My name is Jermaine Pinnock. I'm from Ashford, Connecticut. Okay. Thank you. I should say, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Jermaine Pinnock. I'm from Ashford, Connecticut. You need the exact address or just the town? Okay. 148 Mansfield Road, Ashford, Connecticut. All right. Thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you, Terry Lynn, for this opportunity and inviting us here today. Again, I'm here, my name is Jermaine, and I'm here on behalf of CHAT, which stands for Community Health Advocate Trainers. We are a passionate group of community health educators, and our mission is to help people live healthier, longer lives, right? Through simple, effective, simple lifestyle practices, health lifestyle practices, whole health, I should say. Our initiative was born out of an urgent need. According to the most recent Community Needs Assessment, hypertension, diabetes, mental health conditions such as depression, anxiety are among the top reasons for emergency department visits in the greater Hartford area. Here in eastern Connecticut, including right here in Vernon, the top five perceived health concerns are access to health care, cancer, diabetes, nutrition and physical activity, mental health and substance abuse. The data tells a clear story. We are in the midst of a health crisis, and we are only one epidemic away from the next major health emergency. But we believe there's hope and a solution. And at CHAT, our vision is to help Vernon, to make Vernon a blue zone. For those unfamiliar with the blue zones, as featured in the National Geographic by Dan Buettner, they are areas in the world where people consistently live 100 years or over. Areas, regions like Sardinia, Italy, Okinawa, Japan, Loma Linda, California. They share one thing in common. They have implemented healthy lifestyle habits at the community level. And that's exactly what CHAT is here to do. We teach those principles. We bring them to the doorstep of the community. Through group workshops, interactive classes, and one-on-one coaching, our aim is not just to treat disease, but to reverse it through education and practical lifestyle transformation. Some of the key programs include Depression and Anxiety Recovery, where you can learn evidence-based tools on how to restore emotional and mental health; Diabetes Undone, which gives a life-changing, it's a life-changing course to help reverse chronic diseases through food, movement, and mindset; Healthy Self, which is a powerful 10-week experience that teaches 10 core lifestyle principles for total well-being; and also Blue Zone Cooking Classes, where people can taste and learn the habits of the longest-living people.
I hate to do this to you. I hate to do this to you. But I need to open up that public hearing. But if you guys want to read around and one of the others want to talk, you can do another five minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
So this student take us long.
All right.
All right. Right. So I'm going to call the public hearing to order. It's at 7:35. And can the town clerk please read the legal notice?
This was posted on the outside bulletin board of Town Hall and on the town website on May 13, 2025. It was advertised in the Journal Inquirer on May 14, 2025. Legal Notice, Town of Vernon, Town Council. This is to give notice that at its regular meeting of May 6, 2025, the Vernon Town Council scheduled a public hearing to be held on May 20, 2025, in the third-floor council chambers of the Town Hall Memorial Building, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut. The public hearing will take place at 7:35 PM regarding an ordinance concerning events and gatherings repealing and replacing ordinance 312. Copies of the proposed action are available at Town Clerk's Office, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut, on the town's website, https://www.vernonct.gov/government/legal-and-public-notices. Town Council by Karen C. Daigle, Town Clerk, dated at Vernon, Connecticut, this 13th day of May, 2025.
Thank you. So basically, the mayor, myself, and the town council are here to receive comments and questions from the public. Sean, you want to just come up and give us a quick highlight on this?
Yes, Mayor, through you. So as we discussed last week, this is the ordinance that we currently have on the books, Mass Gathering Ordinance. This is a modification to that ordinance in name and substance. It's now going to be called the Event or Gathering, so it'll encompass all events in town. The application will be submitted through the Planning Department, and it will allow staff, the Police Department, the Planning Department, the Fire Marshals, the Health Department, Parks and Rec, all to review the application, kind of in a uniform way, which isn't currently the case right now. So it's going to eliminate some gaps that currently exist in the current ordinance.
Okay. All right. So questions from the general public. Come on up.
How you doing? My name is Ben Zalas. I live everywhere in Vernon, in everybody's backyard and recycle bins. Group gathering, what do you, I don't comprehend.
Mass gathering, like large, large amounts.
Like large amounts of mass gathering of people?
Yeah.
So the pass ordinance to stop that, or ordinance to need permission for that?
Essentially, we already have the ordinance in place. What this is doing is if you're holding an event on town property, like an unorganized event, then we have to look at a paper, through the eyes for public safety. So what they're going to, what these, what we're going to do, I think it's at least 250, 250 people, Sean? 500. Sean, touch on some of this.
Through you, Mayor. It's a combination. So if it's, if it's going to be more than 250 people at one time or 500 over the course of an event, and that's how it reads currently, there's a caveat that's being added now that if you're on town property and the event could generate more than 100 people, then you need it. So if you're, if you're thinking you're going to have a gathering in the park and it could exceed 100 people, if you're advertising on Facebook and you don't know how many people are going to show up, that would qualify as one of the gatherings.
So even with a park, a regular park, like a public park? So anything that's public?
Yes.
Yes, on town property.
If it's an organized event.
If it's an organized event. So if there's no organized event and just gathered together, they just wanted to gather, they could just do that, right? I mean, under the First Amendment, they can gather under the First Amendment.
Go ahead, you can answer, Sean. You know this more than I do.
Ordinances do not trump the Constitution. Codes, administrative directives, they don't trump it. I just don't see how you need permission if you receive more than 250 people for public property when the public belongs to the public because you take money from their bodies? They use their social security. So how are you going to put an ordinance to stop something that was already given to you for free under the Constitution? That's my question. You don't need permission, to me, even if it's over 200 or 250 people.
All right, we'll let Sean answer the question.
Through you, Mayor. So the, there are current state statutes that allow the Police Department, and if you have a certain number of people, you need an ambulance present. There's a variety of different things that this ordinance allows us a mechanism to put eyes on that application. If you're using an example, if we're having a brew fest and there's automatically alcohol being served, or people crossing the road, it allows us to put the appropriate measures into place, and then any fees or any, any costs that the town would incur get passed on to the applicant.
This is based on public safety?
This is public safety. This is public safety every night when I drive around people's houses and there's people walking around your yards. It's public safety every day. Okay? But I don't agree with that ordinance. I disagree with that ordinance. Me personally, I believe that is overruling the First Amendment. If people want to get together and they want to drink, then they're breaking the law. Point blank. You don't need an ordinance. They go straight to jail, or they get a fine or a tickle. The cop is nice, he'll let them go. But I disagree with that. I mean, I can bring up a lot of more stuff. I can come back next time and I'll do a little bit of more studying, and I've studied the books of Uniform Commercial Code and see whatever the Black Dictionary say about these things, but I don't agree with it at all. If you want to notify the police because there's people there, then so be it. Police already know you're there because they got CCTV cameras everywhere on the poles anyways, and you could watch that from the Police Department. So, you know, at the end of the day, I disagree as a public member for that, because a lot of people do get together. And I don't believe that they need permission to gather for more than 250. Now, if they are drinking or whatsoever, then I don't disagree with them. I agree with them notifying the police that they have booze or whatever and all that, but they shouldn't have it in a public place anyways. You shouldn't be drinking in front of kids anyways and thinking that that's cool, and kids see that and you're drinking, and then they think that they could do it. But at the end of the day, I disagree with it. I don't know what other people do, but I disagree.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the public? Mr. Winkler?
You know, I can smell that.
Yep. It's for the record.
20 Gotira Drive. 5-172 definitions. It says here, "Any event held on town property, i.e. Henry Park, potentially attracting a crowd in excess of 100 non-related individuals, and/or have food provided by an onsite commercial provider." So that "or" is critical. It means that no matter how small the group is, if you have an onsite provider, you have to go through this entire policy. So let's pretend square peg pizza shows up with a pizza oven on a food truck, and it's 25 people on a softball team, they still need to go through all this, and I don't see the reason.
Good, Sean.
And I'll check the wording on that with ludacy if you agree. So it was, if it's going to be over a people, and/or, I guess, and/or, the Health Department, if it's catered event, the Health Department needs to review it. And our mechanism to notify the Health Department is through a review. And there's, and that's the biggest gap that currently exists, is it was only if it was over 250 people and we had no other way to do it. The Fire Marshal still needs to go out if they're going to be putting up tents and having them heated, or, or having, the building official needs to review them if they're going to, if the tents are going to be larger. So there's a variety of different things or triggers that we're currently not putting eyes on, which this, these small changes to the current ordinance would, would allow us to do.
Right. But the fact is, is that even if you, even if you submit something, they may say, yeah, you don't need anything.
That's, that's correct. You might not need anything else, but we, we need to be able to, to see it to do it. So currently, somebody will call us and say, hey, I'm going to be having this event at my, my place of business, and I'm going to have a DJ and a food truck there. Well, if they're setting up a food truck and the food truck isn't powered by, if it has a generator for power, then the Fire Marshal needs to go out and, and take a look at that. The fire code, that's our mechanism of checking that, and if they don't call us, we don't know. This is going to be universal. Every event fills it out, we look at it, and in most cases, we're going to say, have a great event. If there's something that requires additional scrutiny, then every, all the departments will be notified automatically by the online system to allow us to kind of speed up our current review, and hopefully we're not bouncing people around, which happens now inadvertently.
Right.
So you say the Health Department already has regulations regarding food trucks?
Through you, Mayor. These aren't new codes. Everything is based off of existing. So the Health Department has their reviews, the Fire Department, Fire Marshal has their review, the Building Department has their review, Parks has their own rental agreements. So this is kind of summarizing where all of those agreements will be reviewed, or how they'll be reviewed, and how they interplay with each other.
So in my situation, 25 people, we rent the pavilion, square peg pizza shows up with a pizza truck and bakes some pizzas onsite. You really want them to go through all this because they have the pizza truck?
Mayor, if a pizza truck is showing up on town property, then the town needs to know that they're going to be showing up on town property, so this will be a way to, to notify us.
Well, notifying you through application through five departments and to be a fee and all that for such a simple, small project?
Mayor, I may be able to sum this up. The fee is $25. It's a zoning permit fee. It's the same as that for us to take the permit in, and it automatically goes out to all relevant departments. They will either say no comment, or they'll ask additional questions.
If this is what you want to do, fine, but it's overkill in that there's already regulations, and the idea that if you're going to have a food truck, you must go through all this regardless of the size of your meeting, regardless of how few people you have, just seems to be unnecessary, in my opinion.
It's just part of the application process for the rental?
This is, believe it or not, this is going to streamline the way it works, by leaps and bounds, because currently, we send something to the Health Department, and then we wait for them to comment back on whether or not we can proceed. So we can't even start certain reviews until they come back. So this is going to allow us, one is the Health Department, did the vendor receive a hawkers and peddlers permit? Did the vendor, is the food truck, for instance, are they licensed with the Health Department? Do they need to go through a review? It would be a shame to have them show up onsite, not be permitted by the, the Health Department or the town, and then they'll be, they'll be sent home. And that's the way that it currently runs. So this will allow us to do some due diligence upfront and hopefully alleviate concerns later on.
Well, I'll move on as, explain what this is going to do. So we have, what, four or five departments that are involved in approving the application? Got no problem with that. The Police Chief used to receive these, which seemed to make sense if it was public safety. In here, it's been changed to the Planning Department receiving the applications, even though the Planning Department is not one of the groups that has to approve the application. Also, if the application has to be canceled because of some violation, that's also in the hands of the Police Chief. So why would the Planning Department get involved when it's not even one of the groups that has to approve it? It just involves another town agency for, as far as I can see, no reason.
Mayor, the Planning Department is the administrator of the software, so all they're doing is facilitating the software, automatically letting other departments know.
Could, no, what's the name of the software?
OpenGov is the software that we have just acquired.
And if you don't mind, are you going to instruct other departments in its use?
The software will be rolled out, I think July 1 is the effective date of the software, and will be trained by the software and subsequently train all users.
25 has already been approved by the council?
The $25 fee is the fee approved by the, the application fee, the current application, and it will continue with this one unless the council opts to change the fees associated with the Planning and zoning department.
So, yes, the council did approve a $20, $25 fee for applying for use of town facilities in this regard?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Okay. Right. Seeing nobody else, I'm going to close, I'm going to, the public hearing is adjourned, turn back to the regular Town Council meeting. All right. Citizens Forum is open back up again. They're going to come back up again. So you have, you have two minutes left on yours.
Okay.
But if you want to go longer, you can have one of them step up.
Yes, yes.
Okay?
I appreciate it.
All right.
So just going back a little, again, our goal is to help Vernon to be a blue zone, and some of the programs that we have to offer are Depression and Anxiety Recovery, Diabetes Undone, Healthy Self, and Blue Zone Cooking Classes. Again, we're not here to replace medical care, we're here to complement it, to empower people and to lighten the load on emergency services and healthcare systems. We believe Vernon has the potential to be a model town for wellness in Connecticut, but we can't do it alone. We're looking to collaborate with local government, schools, faith-based groups, and non-for-profits to make this vision a reality. If you're interested in learning more or exploring how CHAT can partner with the Town of Vernon to improve the health of our residents, I'd love to speak with you further. Thank you again for your time, your service to the community, and your commitment to building a healthier Vernon. Let's make Vernon a town where people thrive, mind, body, and spirit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sandy Slingo, and I live in Talin. Our address is 9 Hartford Turnpike. We wanted to thank Terry Lynn for the invitation to come and speak with you today. I'm going to be sharing a little more information about the blue zones. They're geographic areas with lower rates of chronic diseases and longer life expectancy. Diet, fasting, and exercise are factors associated with blue zones. They are characterized by a combination of healthy lifestyle practices, strong community bonds, and a purpose-driven approach to life. A few places in the world are called blue zones. Ikaria is an island in Greece where people eat a Mediterranean diet, rich in olive oil and homegrown vegetables. Sardinia, Italy, has a region where some of the oldest men in the world live. Okinawa, Japan, is home to the world's oldest women. Nicoya Peninsula, Costa Rica, has a diet based around beans and corn tortillas. The Seventh Avaness in Loma Linda, California, are a very religious group of people. They're vegetarians and live in a tight-knit community. A number of studies have found that these areas contain extremely high rates of people who live over 90 and 100 years of age. Chronic diseases are becoming more and more common in old age. While genetics somewhat determine your lifespan and susceptibility to diseases, your lifestyle probably has a greater impact. Interestingly, genetics probably only account for 20 to 30% of longevity, so environmental influences, including diet and lifestyle, play a huge role in determining your lifespan. One thing that's common to blue zones is that those who live there primarily eat a 95% plant-based diet of fruits and vegetables, legumes, whole grains, and nuts and seeds. Exercise is another extremely important factor in aging. Other studies have shown the benefits of exercise in reducing the risk of cancer, heart disease, and overall health. Getting adequate rest and a good night's sleep also seems to be very important for living a long and healthy life. A number of studies have found that not getting enough sleep or getting too much sleep can significantly increase the risk of death, including heart disease and stroke. CHAT seeks to educate the community and work collaboratively with other groups on how to improve their health and encourage blue zone living. Please let us know if you're interested in working with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jan Ladue, and I live at 942 Hartford Turnpike in Vernon, and my speech is very short. I just have some handouts to give everybody, if it's all right. If I go, can I approach and give it to you, or how do you like it?
You know what? You have to give it to the clerk, and then they can give them out. We can get them afterwards. All right? Thank you. Anybody else?
How y'all doing? My name's Gennaro. Yeah, no, I don't have an address. I just stay where I'm at. Sometimes I'll stay at the hotel. Mayor, I disagree with that rule. I don't think you should charge people $25 because they're going to cook for people, especially if they're already certified and already got approved by the Health Department. I disagree with that. I don't know what y'all going to do with that. I think that Vernon is just trying to get rich and take the people's money. I'm being honest with you. That's how I feel. If I was mayor, I wouldn't approve that. I would let it be the way it is. It'll be honest, and we'll be real honest. But I'm here for some other stuff. Well, first I want to say, because I know back then I was talking about the COVID shot and all that, for people that don't know, you can sue Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson now, under the Ninth Federal District Court approved this law. They approved that you can sue them now. And you could sue any subcontractor that subcontracted through those companies that got money for those vaccines. Okay? So a lot of people that don't know, now they know. The information, my name is Gennaro. My email is G E N A R O G 42018 at gmail dot com. I can help you start up the civil suit. It's very easy. I'll do it for free. I don't have no problems. I can keyboard 68 words a minute. I do not mind. We could, I have every law book in my storage, and I can help you if y'all want to get money. I started with my daughter already. So we're suing Florida for that, because she took all three shots. Now she has massive amounts of problems. Kidney problems, heart problems, lips swollen up, arms swollen up, her, her things swollen up, shit and blood, you know? Things that people should read before they take. You know, you got to read. That's how you go to high school. You go to school, you read and you learn, and you learn from the teacher and stuff like that. Oh, too. I would like to thank the people and the public members of Vernon, especially the old grandmas on High Street. I love y'all, I respect y'all, I know y'all watched this. Thank y'all for all the cans and bottles y'all give me, and I appreciate y'all not shooting me and not going through y'all's recycling bin. Y'all ask who I am first. Other than that, man, they're very kind people. They always invite me to their house. I end up cutting their yards or helping them fix their roofs or whatever. I end up cutting their yards or helping them fix their roofs or whatever. I do what I can. Um, so I wanna also thank Officer Lisi. He arrested my cousin about two weeks ago. I cried to him because I had to, 'cause my cousin takes care of me. He gets me a rental every two days so I can can and make money. So I would like to thank Officer Lisi for arresting him and giving him the lowest bond in the world. I commend that man for that as much as I did when I come back there. And my family's told me to tell you that they, they, they owe him one, and they do owe him one. Okay? Um, what else I wanted to say? Oh, Pamela Harris, broke as hell, huh? Pregnant. I don't know how y'all let this lady be broke like this. She takes the whole public's money. What's that lady's name if she was running for presidency? Pamela Harris, or whatever her name is? Whatever to her, I know she's, I read something today about she owes over two hundred million dollars or something or something. And another article came out that, um, Obama's wife is actually a real man. She's a transgender. She actually admitted it to on, on, on video, um, which I have. I like to say that I had to bring that up because, you know, she admitted it herself that she's a transgender man. It finally came out, you know? You know, things come out all the time, right, man? Things come out a lot. When people think that they don't know, people do know, you know? When you think that I don't know, I know. But, and, um, I would like also, also to say, um, I would like to thank the, um, garbage workers, the DPW. They're very nice. They let me grab stuff. Then I do what I have to do before they grab the garbage or the recycle bits. Um, I know I have something else important to say. I'll say it at the Board of Education. I'll blow Mr. McCary's brain off of this one. But he might be mad, though. I'm gonna let you know that. But, um, it's 'cause they, I asked them a long time ago if my son can go to a better school, like Jinger Center. 'Cause my son is very autistic. He's very smart. I can give him a bunch of toys and stuff. He'll just put a tank together. He'll put a car together. He'll put a house together. He's very non-verbal, but a little bit verbal. But he told me no. He denied me no. Um, I had past experience before with teachers, which I like fear for my son, you know, with my teachers. I mean, I can mention their name, you know, but they don't make those, you know? But I could tell you this, he's gonna be mad. Just wanna let you know that. He's not gonna like what I'm gonna say at the Board of Education, 'cause I'm really upset with him. I appreciate y'all. Thank you for your food in your box. I did grab some this morning. Cheers, you. I always do call you. I know you was watching. I seen you. Appreciate you, though. That wasn't you? You live on, um, I don't wanna say, I was gonna say Gordon.
Yeah, sorry, you gotta wrap up.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a pretty house now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a great one.
You too.
Terry, I was told to tell you, say hi for the people that I know you dig, bro.
Anybody else in the public? See, no, I'm gonna close public forum. When I'm talking myself. Bear with me a second. All right. All right, believe it or not, it is Memorial Day weekend, this coming weekend. I don't know where the time went this year. It, uh, just chased us down. All right, Sunday, May twenty-fifth, the Tocqueville Memorial Day Parade. Staging's at Tocqueville Congregational Church parking area at eight thirty AM and stepping off at nine AM. Vernon's annual Memorial Day Parade, which is May twenty-sixth. Staging is at Northeast School on East Street at nine AM, stepping off at nine thirty AM. Grove Hill Cemetery for a ceremony at ten AM. Following the ceremony, the parade will continue down Grove Street to Route seventy-four and concludes with a ceremony in Central Park at approximately eleven AM. Vernon Regional Adult Education graduation is on June fifth, twenty twenty-five, beginning promptly at six PM in the Rockville High School auditorium. The Rockville High School Class of twenty twenty-five graduation is on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at six PM. You have, uh, you have tickets and stuff in an envelope on your table there. Event is held in the courtyard inside the school. If it is raining, everyone will gather in the auditorium, and tickets will be required for entry. So if you show up and it's raining, make sure you bring your envelopes with you. There's also a parking pass in there. Uh, July in the Sky, this planned for July ninth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at five PM with fireworks beginning at dark. Two locations for this event are Central Park and Henry Park. Parade date for the event is July tenth, twenty twenty-five, same time, same locations. Out is annually planned for the first Tuesday in August. This year, the event will be held at Saint Bernard's Church Parking Lot, August fifth, twenty twenty-five. Event begins at five PM and concludes at nine thirty PM. The Mayor's Concert Series kicks off on Thursday, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Is at Henry Park. And first, on the thirty-first, the concert is the Wyndham Concert, the Wyndham Concert Band. By August seventh with Night Shift. August fourteenth with the Beatles, Beetle Al's Magical Band, Magical History Tour, I'm sorry, confusing two of them. Uh, heard them a few years ago. They were pretty good. And concluding with Rock Station on August twenty-first. You're welcome. Again, it's gonna be at Harry Park. And that's what I have. All right, under consent, we are pulling consent number eight, um, that, that party has resigned from the Conservation Commission, so number eight is being pulled. All right, Brian, consent?
Mr. Mayor, motion to move the consent agenda items one through seven as written.
Seconded by Mary Ann. Are we pulling any of them? Yes. Pulling number four. Okay. Any others? All those in favor of, of the all consent except number four? Okay. Consent number four, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to the ordinance number three twenty-one, establishment of a fair rent commission, the town council hereby approves Mayor Daniel H. Champagne's reappointment of Kevin Santini, U, ten thirty-one Hartford Turnpike, Vernon, Connecticut, as a regular member of the fair rent commission. Said term to commence on July first, twenty twenty-five, and expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Seconded by Mary Ann. Right?
Okay, through you, if I'm not mistaken, Santini owns about sixty percent of the apartments here in Vernon?
He owns a lot of apartments, yes.
Okay. Is that not a conflict of interest for him to be on the rent fair commission board?
Um, actually landlords can be. Uh, the, the problem that we faced when we developed this board is we had no volunteers. And if you actually look at it, there's a couple landlords on this list. So we, when we put this whole thing together, we couldn't find any volunteers, just like most of our boards. We have openings on a lot of our boards, and you just can't find people. And he signed up.
But is that a conflict of interest 'cause he holds so many apartments here in town?
No. You know, for, uh, I don't think you're gonna get many complaints out of his apartments.
I'm not saying that complaints. I just mean, like, if you're on the rent, if you're on the rent fair rent commission and you hold apartments, it seems like it'd be a conflict if, if the city or somebody says, okay, we need to do a rental cap. Or if people are like, they're trying to get assistance with rent and stuff. He's on the board. Like, he's, the person that you have to complain to about you can't afford your rent is on the rent commission board. That's not.
No. Check that.
Okay.
But like I said, sadly, nobody signed up. And to date, they've not met once to hear a complaint. So no complaints have been filed, and the board has not convened for any. Anybody else? All those in favor? One opposed. Lori? All right.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the disposal of fixed assets for the Vernon Public Works Department that's disclosed on the fixed asset disposal request form.
Seconded by John? Right. Any questions? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. You know what you do? Next time, wait back there. If they have a question, I'll call you up. Thank you, guys. All right. Let's, all right, let's go over to the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, the town council, consistent with chapters five, sections four, and six of the Vernon Town Charter, hereby moves to approve the ordinance entitled, ordinance number blank, an ordinance entitled an ordinance concerning events and gatherings, repealing and replacing ordinance number three twelve.
Second, Mary Ann? All right, let's get into this one. John, come on up. I'm sure they got some questions. So can you just get into the, get into the fact as to why, um, what brought about these changes? I know it was taking a while to get these together.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I missed the last thing you said.
My note was, it, under the current ordinance, which is pretty much the same thing, it's, it took a long time to get through the process.
It, it, it took a while, and there was some confusion along with it, and, um, and a lot of the interpretation, or historical interpretation, left when the old police chief left. So now there's a new interpretation, and, um, uh, the chief, which has noticed a few things that were set in the ordinance that we need to, uh, we need to adhere to. So this is a way to assist in that review, streamline, fill in the gaps. And, uh, and I can give you an example if that, if that helps. There was somebody that came in and wanted to have a, a car show. That car show was anticipated to have fifty people, but they were going to have a food truck, and they were going to have a DJ and music. There was no review because that, it, it just didn't do anything. But it was on a Saturday, which meant the fire marshal needed to come in on a Saturday and, and inspect the food trucks. Our costs, which were incurred, there was no way to pass those costs along. So that's one small example of, uh, of a variety of different things that can take place. This will allow us to do a thorough review upfront, get the information we need back and forth, um, and not sending them from person to person to go through. You're gonna have to check with the fire marshal. You're gonna have to check with the health department. You're gonna have to check with somebody else. This is, it's all gonna be done in one, one application, mission, one review. And hopefully we can, uh, continue robust events here in, uh, in town.
Okay. Lou, why don't you come on up? You wrote this, uh, why don't you have a seat? I'll put you on a hot seat, too. All right, questions? Lori?
Through you, Mayor. Um, from my understanding, there's a twenty-five dollar application fee, and there's also a fee to rent the space, correct?
Depending on where you're going.
Well, Henry Park is the example.
Yes. Yeah, so, uh, Henry, there's a fee to rent if you were going to reserve space at Henry Park now.
Okay. That's what I'm saying, is a twenty-five feet dollars is on top of any fees you would pay.
Correct. This is a, oh, um, all-encompassing. So if you're having a event on private property, you would fill this out. If you're having an event on public property that meets the definition, you would fill this out. So it's one process for all the different events that would take place.
So they didn't, so you said if I'm having an event on a private property, I have to fill that out too?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on an example, but if you were, um, if you're having, uh, if one of the, the mill owner here wanted to have a, a craft fair, and he was going to have this, uh, all these vendors come to his property, um, that would be an event he's advertising on, on Facebook and everywhere. There would be an influx of people, and that would require us to, uh, this would allow us to review that application and permit it. Might not have been the best example in the world, but I'm drawing a blank.
Thinking of birthday parties, graduation parties, again?
No, no. If, if you're having an event at your house, um, and these are invited guests, then it's not it. This is, this is if you're having, you don't know the people that are coming. You are, you're having an event, and you're saying, come, I'm going to be, uh, have, I don't know, conducting a craft fair. I'm going to be having, uh, uh, something else. You don't know who's gonna show up. We don't know who's gonna show up. We don't know whether we need, uh, a police presence. We don't know whether we need an ambulance. There's triggers with the number of people that, that attend an event, on whether they need an ambulance present, whether they need, uh, closed, all of those things. This will be the mechanism to review those things.
Okay, and my only question, um, of a hundred non-reliated individuals, how are you gonna identify these people aren't related?
By asking the questions. And this is a mechanism to ask the questions. It, it, in other, that's just, uh, um, and Lou, you'll have a legal term for it, but that is the, um, it's a way for us to say, if you're having a family reunion, then you don't need to fill out the application permit. If you're, if you're renting the pavilion at Henry Park, then the rental application alone will be fine.
Okay, 'cause that was, I was thinking family reunions, and some families are very, very large.
Wedding, a family reunion, those are, those are, those are some of the exemptions that are listed in the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening. Um, so it doesn't really seem to be really that much of a difference, um, 'cause I remember when I used to have my Santa House fundraisers at the American Legion, and we would rent the hall, and we would have to have a permit, and then we would have to notify the health department and pay them, and then they would come out and inspect the barbecue people that we hired to do our cooking for the event and everything like that. So, uh, it's pretty much, this kinda seems like it simplifies it for you. Um, you pay the twenty-five dollar fee, and everything is done in-house, rather than going through all that whole process like I used to have to for so many years when I had it at the Legion every year. So I, you know, I kinda really don't see a difference. It just makes it easier for you, really. Thank you.
So and, and I don't wanna contradict you because that, it makes perfect sense. The Legion would be one of the exempt places anyhow. So if you're in business to have events and gatherings, you don't need to comply with this, this regulation. These are impromptu things for facilities that are not, uh, the health department is still gonna wanna know, and there is other things, but that's not what this ordinance is meant to cover. So if, if we had a movie theater in town and, and people, you had seven hundred people going into a, a movie theater, that's fine. We have Rocking Horse, who has an occupancy of six hundred, six hundred or so people. They wanna fill that as part of their business? They don't need it, they don't need an application to do it. These are for events in places that are not set up to have those events. So we're allowed to review them and make sure the safeguards are put in place, and make sure that all the appropriate entities have a chance to look and ask their questions in advance, so there's no last-minute surprises.
Thank you.
I, I think one of the examples that was pointed out to, to me was if somebody tries to rent one of our facilities, and there's clearly not enough parking, we've gotta tell them, you can't use that when you gotta go use one of the other facilities because you can't have the cars on main roads, especially if they're gonna cause a problem. Or you can't get from a parking lot to the event unless you cross the road, then I have a policeman to be part of that event. If you have a birthday party at the pavilion, you have to fill the application out because you're related, and that, that's the whole purpose. All right, any other questions? Brian?
Through, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gailey. So Historical Society book sale, does this change anything they have to do? Dun, dun, he's right.
I, I don't, I don't believe so. So, uh, events that are reoccurring that have been going on for years would fall under. And I'm looking for government sponsored events or, uh,
It's a private organization, really.
Yeah, only established assemblies. I, I don't believe that would, that would trigger anything. That is something that I doubt they're gonna reach the threshold of 250 people. Dropped off a lot of books there myself, so.
On a day coming in, on the first Saturday, there'll be 250 people come through. Right, there's a lot of people who do that, that's why I question, asking that.
I don't think that would, that would trigger this, but we'll, we'll evaluate it and, and if they need to, we'll assist them in filling out the permit. So they don't have to do it.
Okay, how about the Strong Family Farms?
I, Nancy was, Nancy was on the phone with me earlier asking all the similar questions, so, um, there are some of the things, some of the events may require it. There, um, I can't remember, the Harvest Festival, I think, is one of them. That's been going on for X number of years, uh, which is an agricultural fair, which probably meets the definition of agricultural fair. She'd have to look into that too.
Okay.
To know whether that meets that definition.
How about the Fire, Fire Department, Mother's Day Flower Sale?
I would say that is a government sponsored event.
Okay, even though, how about, uh, like First Congregational Church has a, uh, thing every once in a while where they open to the public? Breakfast and stuff, is that?
Places of worship are another one that's, uh, that's exempt.
Okay. So make sure that these people do not, like the Strong Farm is a nonprofit, the Historical Society is a nonprofit, so. We're gonna be okay?
I, I, I'm gonna be okay. The, we're going to make sure that, this is not intended to create, and trust me. I'm not a fan of creating unnecessary hurdles. This is something that, uh, that I see as a way to clear the past so we don't have to second guess and question and add hurdles as we go. This will be spelled out, we'll be able to find, and we're, we're probably gonna hit a few bumps. Um, because we're hitting them now with the current ordinance. So this will allow us to, um, to evaluate what works, what doesn't work, make changes as appropriate. But this is the best, um, the best set of examples we could put forward.
Okay, but it's really to clear, clarify things that make everything streamlined, right?
That's the intent.
Yeah, excellent, thank you, Mr. Gately.
You're welcome.
Mr. Speder, Jean, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Phil?
Thank you, through you. Um, I think that 250 would mean sort of answered Brian's question at the same time. So at the Historical Society, people go through.
No, that's not what says in the ordinance.
I think it's 250 at one time or 500 over the course of the event.
Well, it could be 500.
But my, my question was related. I understand if a, a food truck has a generator, it makes absolute sense. You know, we wanna make sure that's safe, but, um, you know, something like an ice cream truck. Are they even allowed to go through, like Henry Park? I, I know they're on all our streets, um, but are they allowed to go through Henry Park?
They, they have to get a permit. Permit allows them to go into those areas.
Okay, so they would be exempt on having an event at the, the park back here. Um, a birthday party, but I've asked, I don't think Grandma's ice cream is around anymore. But, you know, you invite a, uh, an ice cream truck, gee, if you're gonna be around that day, would you stop at the park? And I know it's a, a kinda niche question, but I can certainly see that happening.
Go ahead, Sean. So the, if, if it's not, um, and I might not fully understood the question. If it's not an event that if, uh, if you're having a, if the softball team, which is a sanctioned event, said it would be great to, I'm gonna treat everyone to ice cream and we're gonna have, that, that's not, that's not this, that's not what this is covering.
Good.
If you're, um, but that ice cream truck to show up at the park needs to have been inspected by the health department and it needs to have a hawkers and peddlers permit from the police department. So those need to happen regardless of this ordinance. I, I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, it does, I just was thinking, a small gathering, if you're having the pizza truck. I understand needing the truck inspected, but if a permitted ice cream truck is driving around and stops. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't an issue.
Those, those trucks stop all the time. One of the points is, you know, understand that this ordinance is already exists. This is a rewrite to just try and make it easier. And those questions that you're asking probably asked when this was brought, brought forth. But Sean has been complaining about this ordinance and trying to make sure, or just make it easier for a long time now.
Okay.
We're still up.
Yeah, my last question is about the fee. So is the intention of the fee? Let me put it this way, what is the intention of the fee?
It's through the mayor. I'd love to say this is to, uh, to help us break even for the effort to, this is not even gonna cover a fraction of the time to do a review. It's a, it's a method to, um, our system costs money, our software costs money. This is one way to, to, and I won't say augment it, but it's, it's, it's going to help cover some of the costs. A fraction of the cost maybe, but it's certainly not covering staff time. The other fees that are associated with it, the fire marshal, the, uh, police department, all the other fees. If, if Public Works needs to come and do, uh, sweep a street because of an event. Those are all fees that will be charged at current FEMA rates.
Right, that makes sense.
The ordinance.
Right. So are we voting to continue the $25 fee tonight or are we?
Well, the fee's already embedded, but that's not in the ordinance. I, I think it says a fee, but I don't think it says how much.
Right, it says to be determined by the council. And if this is replacing, if this is replacing an ordinance, then it's a new ordinance, even though most of the language is the same. Wouldn't we have to set that fee?
Yeah, let me just say this before we get too deep into what you're saying. Don't charge a fee that's gonna create a lot of work. And somebody comes along and says, you know what, this might happen, so I'm gonna make them do the work. And then they never show up. And say that happens 10 times a year. At what point do we say, all right, the taxpayer is not gonna continue to allow this? You know, the taxpayer's paying for this. But when you put a $25 fee in there, you know, it's minor. It's not gonna cover exactly what the taxpayer is paying out. But what it does do is it says, now I have something tangible into it. So I'm not just gonna go say, can you do the review for me? You're gonna say, I'm gonna, I want this to happen, I'm gonna pay the $25 and I don't wanna lose my $25.
How often then do people apply now?
How many applications do you know, Sean?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm gonna seem aloof here. We get a lot of phone calls asking if they need to apply because it doesn't necessarily meet the definition of the ordinance. So we, we field a lot of inquiries and, and back and forth. And in, in some cases, that person calls five people because there's five or six different people involved in the process. I couldn't give you a number of how many people, but it is, uh,
Could you ballpark like once a month?
During the summer months, it's much more frequent. During the winter months, far less. So if I were to say maybe 20 or so during the summer, it's not an astronomical number. But figure that five a month or so.
Thanks.
Bill?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is actually a question, uh, I just wanted to thank the administration staff for the red line copy. It's very helpful. And thank you for that.
You're welcome. I think, was that you that asked for it? Somebody did. Okay, that's why we did it. All right.
Um, the fees are in here, I see. And it's basically current FEMA rate. So it is in this ordinance. Um, and it looks to me like it's streamlining it, making it easier for our residents if they need to. They know to go to one person, it's gonna go down the line. And I'm a big safety person, so I like seeing that it's going to the fire marshal, the health department, public works. So I, I thoroughly support it and I think it, it was a lot of work to put this together. Um, and I know several people had helped putting it together and I just wanted to say thank you.
Yes. Anybody, oop, Terry?
Thank you, through you. So just a, a quick question, so how, um, in the, for number five here, you use an example of Henry Park being a potential, um, spot for people. So how do you rectify someone that might not have a permit to use the space? And they may have under 100, but could go to it. So how do you eliminate someone from just showing up at these spaces in town and setting up and doing their thing?
Mayor, if it's okay, yeah, uh, thank you for asking that question. Cuz the reason why this is in here is because there are people, uh, I think there's a local real estate agent who advert, advertises an Easter egg hunt every year at Henry Park. Out a rental agreement without any Parks and Rec knowing about it. And she just tries to get people to show up. It's a great thought, but it creates havoc for, uh, a number of different departments. This is one of the mechanisms to say, you need to, you need to have a permit before you do that. So you can't just advertise on the radio, you can't send things out of, over social media. You have to have a permit in place so we can make sure we are evaluating the, whatever protocols need to be put in place.
And if you're not a business and you're just, hey, I'm gonna have a baby shower or a gender reveal party. Let's go to Henry Park and set up and bring our cakes and, and cupcakes and set up and have an event. Because that has happened because.
Yeah, but is there pyro in this or?
No. For example, an event that was being held that was ultimately like canceled. So the pavilion was not being used and a group showed up for that purpose to have a gender reveal party. And we said it was rented, it had permits and all that. And they're like, oh, we're just gonna go down to the Grove. So they just went down to the Grove and set up their party. So.
Through, through the mayor, if, if you wanna go have a picnic with your friends and family at the park, you don't need a permit to do that. If you're renting a specific location in the park, you do. So this ordinance would not have for a gender reveal party unless you're on Facebook saying, hey, I don't know you. But come to the, come and see what my niece is having, uh, for a child. It's gonna be great, as many people as possible, just show up. That would, that would be something that we'd wanna know about.
Okay, anybody else? Nope, okay. All right. Again, voting for the, the changes here will change the ordinance. Voting against it, we, we stay with the current version of the ordinance. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Lou. Minutes?
Minutes. Mr. Mayor, the town council leaves the reading in the minutes of the regular town council meeting of May 6th, 2025. And that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Second.
Who said that? Terry, seconded by Terry. Uh, any corrections or deletions? No, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Motion to adjourn?
Hold on one second. For those that don't know, this is Brian's last meeting. Uh, you know, he retired, he, he retires and decides that, uh, he, he's gonna leave the town council at the same time.
Oh, no, Brian.
So I just wanna thank Brian for the, how many, 24 years?
Yeah.
24 years of service on the town council. Thank you.
If I had known, Brian, I'd have bought you cupcakes.
All right, Brian?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Seconded by Mary Ann, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you, guys, have a good night.